Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is that of the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Days.
Present.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Here.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a quorum.
Very well, is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of September 10th, 2019? So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Journal for September 10th, 2019 is approved.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order, for the purpose of adopting and presenting a resolution recognizing Ms. Ernestine Shivers-Jones on the occasion of her retirement from her longtime service to the Parks Board and for the presentation of the resolution to her.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Please read Resolution Number Four.
Yes ma'am. Resolution Number Four introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Resolution, whereas Ernestine Shivers-Jones began her service on the St. Louis County Parks Advisory Board on May 4th, 2004, and after 15 years of dedicated public service, retired on September 9th, 2019. And whereas Ernestine served the Department of Parks and Recreation not only as a public servant, but as a mentor to many who benefited greatly by her experience and professionalism. And whereas Ernestine earned the admiration of her fellow Park Board members, serving as the Chairman of the Board for several years. And whereas Ernestine assisted the Department of Parks and Recreation by her enthusiastic and much valued support of parks programming, maintenance, and capital improvement projects, which will be greatly missed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council expresses its gratitude to Ernestine Shivers-Jones on behalf of all of the patrons of the county park system for her years of service in the public good, and salutes her dedication and service to the Department of Parks and Recreation.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number Four.
Second.
Roll call.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Resolution Number Four, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well, Resolution Number Four is adopted.
If you would like to come up.
Any other motions?
Yes. I don't need to make a motion just to suspend the rule though.
No.
Okay. Will you please read Resolution Five?
Yes ma'am. Resolution Number Five introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. Resolution, whereas a chapter of the history of St. Louis County, of which few today are particularly proud, occurred in 1956 when the city of Creve Court took steps to prevent a respected area physician and African-American, Dr. Howard Venable, from owning and constructing a home in the city. Rather than welcoming a new resident, the city condemned his property and established a public park on the site, naming it after the city's mayor. And whereas, now, in large part due to the efforts of Attorney James Singer, this very unfortunate piece of the story of a municipality in St. Louis County has been brought to the attention of the public, and Creve Court is engaged in discussions to rename the park in Dr. Venable's honor. And whereas, Mr. Singer's determination to let the truth be known is notably worthy of the gratitude of all St. Louis Countyans. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council expresses its gratitude to James Singer for helping to make right a wrong, and encourages the city of Creve Court to do the right thing.
I move for adoption of Resolution Five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Resolution Number Five, there are six ayes and one absent.
Resolution Number Five is adopted. Very well, we have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, all districts.
Receive file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, fourth district.
Receive file, the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, fifth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number four, sixth district.
Receive file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
We have no road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one.
Receive file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three, fifth district.
Receive file, and the agreement be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, seventh district.
Receive file, and the agreement be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, sixth district.
Receive file, refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Planning, and the County Councilor, and that will be the order.
Item number six, fifth district.
Receive file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven, fifth district.
Oh, receive file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, seventh district.
Receive file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number nine, fourth district.
Receive file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 10, second district.
Receive file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 11, sixth district.
Receive file, and the matter be held in the Order of Business, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, fourth district.
Receive file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 13, all districts.
Receive file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for number 14, and that will be the order.
Item number 15, all districts.
Receive file, and the appointments and reappointments be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one.
Please receive, file, and the County Council will be requested to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Yes, did you also...
And that will be the order.
Did you also want to refer that to the Committee of the Hall, or wait?
I want to wait for the legislation.
Report of special committees.
Please hold on the Order of Business.
I'm terribly sorry, Mr. Executive.
So, Mr. Executive.
I wonder if the clerk wants to hear from me tonight?
That's what you have to say.
That's what everyone says. Thank you, Ernie, and good evening, everyone. We've seen a lot of headlines this summer about children being killed by gun violence. Mostly attention has been on unsolved killings in the city of St. Louis. But gun violence is not just a city issue. In fact, as we learned last Friday, we have gun violence in the county as well. Two shootings a few hours apart took the lives of a three-year-old boy and a 13-year-old boy. As I walked through the scene where three-year-old Rodney March was shot in an apartment complex near Jennings, I asked myself, why is this happening? How could this happen? Before I could fully process the tragedy, the news broke of the shooting of another 13-year-old boy. Barely six hours after the death of Rodney, the 13-year-old Clifford Swan was gunned down while walking with friends in an apartment complex near Spanish Lake after he was helping his mother, his grandmother, move in. Police worked closely with prosecutors, and within a few hours, the crimes were charges were filed. The county has solved 21 of 24 murders this summer, all of them involving children. But sadly, that's not where these stories end. Families are torn apart, communities are scared. Crime marches on, sometimes with a vengeance. You can't stand aside and hope it gets better. Crime is a regional issue, and tackling it must be as well. Tomorrow, I will announce a new crime commission. It will go a long way to make sure that everyone in the criminal justice process is at the table. Those on the commission will include the county prosecutor, the police chief, the presiding judge, the head of justice services, the chair of the county council, two county residents, a municipal elected official, and me. Forming such a commission is spelled out in existing county ordinance. The commission is empowered by the ordinance to develop comprehensive countywide plan for the improvement of law enforcement and criminal justice. What it looks like, we don't know yet. But the discussions must begin in earnest with all parties that have the ability to make change at the table. Resources outside the county are also available. Governor Parson wants to help, so we're looking at what resources the state can bring to the county, and also what resources we may need in the next year's budget. Rodney and Clifford bring the total of children killed by gun violence to six. Six this year, one more than last year, and six children too many. I'm working every day to find out how to stop these tragic killings. I know our residents expect answers, and they should. What I am doing now is to make sure the right people are at the table for these conversations so we can look at public safety as a whole. It's a hard discussion, and it's a long discussion. It's one that all regional leaders must actively participate in. It's my hope to be able to announce some positive actions later this month. Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you, ma'am. So we'll go ahead and just reiterate that we're going to hold the Ethics Committee report on the Order of Business, which brings us to public forum.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have 11 speakers this evening.
Very well, please come forward when your name is stated, and give us your name and address for the record. And as I say every week, we limit the presentations to three minutes. We'll give you a little grace, and I'll remind you when you're beyond your time. I would appreciate it, though, if everyone would respect that three-minute guideline and try to keep your remarks within it. So with that, let's call the first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Isora Liggins.
Good afternoon. County Executive Paige, Tyre County Council. I come before you again. Of course, always asking the same question, looking for answers regarding what due process and equal protection looks like for me as a citizen here in St. Louis County. I wrote a letter to my new councilwoman, Councilwoman Days, and I spoke with her a little over a week ago, and I was just wondering, will I hear back from your office, or will we have a meeting, or I haven't been able to get any information back from your office?
May I answer?
Sure.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I can expect to hear from you. Hopefully, we can have a sit-down, and you can hear what my situation really is, because I think with that, you could probably help me, because I really believe I can be helped. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Liggins.
Our next speaker is John Davidson.
Good evening, Mr. Executive and county members. My name is John Davidson, and I came this evening because I believe that people who are interested in serving on the Board of Freeholders should appear in public so that people have some idea why we are considering that possibility, and what some of us who have thought a long time about this believe should be given some attention. By way of background, while I'm a lawyer, I also am an economist, a regional and urban economist. I've been a member of the American Economics Association. I've never practiced as an economist. I always use those skills as part of the legal work that I did. About eight or nine years ago, I began a very intensive study into the problems in St. Louis and why we have them, and I have watched while we have failed to develop an effective means to talk about them, principally because no one ever talks to regional economists. I did some work in the first area on why St. Louis suffers as it does economically, and I'll share with you the three principal reasons. I worked with the University of Michigan with a good friend of mine there, Miles Kimball, who's now transferred to Colorado. The principal problem that St. Louis has is a balance of payments problem that arises out of the amount of taxes that we spend to the state of Missouri that are not returned here. It is an economic hidden tax that has immense consequences, probably negatively affects our income and property values at close to 10%. If you just stop and think about it, we pay a tax dollar here, it's spent in Columbia. Columbia's a nice town, did you ever ask why? Until the region confronts that tax imbalance, there's very little that you can do. I can tell you that as an economist, you can believe it or not, I'll be happy to meet with you, I'll show you the research, the papers that have been done on it, show you how far we could go with the information we could get from the state of Missouri. The second problem we have is the state of Missouri does not fund transportation funding. There's a very simple formula in regional economics. Every 10 minutes of commuting time costs a worker 2.5% of their salary. Every 10 minutes of commuting time. If the city of St. Louis would remove on-street parking and take out those blocks that they have in their city blocks, they'd probably increase their city income 5% over a reasonable period of time. But we don't ever talk to regional economists about such things. The last thing, and what really hurts, the one institution that could move St. Louis County is UMSL. We have a population about 29, 33%. The numbers vary on education attainment. I'm fortunate enough to have a home in Minnesota. Minneapolis-St. Paul has a college education population of almost 50% because the University of Minnesota is in Minneapolis-St. Paul, and it turns out tens of thousands of students.
Mr. Davidson, I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay, be happy to. But anyhow, that's a little bit of background. If we're going to have an effective Board of Freeholders, we're going to need people like me who talk about who's Ford, Storper, what do regional economics talk about these things, and we're also going to have to have people talk about another indifferent issue, and that really concerns me. As proposed now to merge the city and the county, in my view, and I think of most people, is gerrymandering. We would be adding 80,000 Democrats to the county with immense political consequences. And so we also need people who are capable of talking about whether there are solutions to that, the political implications, and so forth. And so I think in addition to having strong economic background on the people that you put on the Board of Freeholders, you're going to need some very sophisticated political scientists to take a look at what...
Mr. Davidson, I really do need you to wrap up, please.
With that, I offer those two observations. If I decide to go ahead, I'm going to contact each of y'all and ask an opportunity to talk to you, because I believe the decision as collective is about who might make the board. I haven't decided to do that, but I will be giving it some thought and further observation. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ed Golderman.
Members of the council, my name is Ed Golderman. I've been watching this stuff for 50 years, so whether I'm right or wrong, I give you my best in three minutes. First of all, as you've honored people here tonight, please consider, and my representative isn't here, to honor the regional asset Keel Opera House as the economic catalyst of downtown St. Louis west of Tucker for the last 10 years, and financially saving the St. Louis Blues hockey team. I don't think it will be honored downtown, so I'm asking the council to consider doing something special. Thank you. Secondly, I've watched commissions be formed for 50 years. What I think you need to do is stop sending county police officers into the city to the bidding of the Blues and the Cardinals and the money boys and girls, where you send our officers in when we are sharp in the county. And frankly, I would fire whoever is sending county police officers into the city for any reason. I think you operate at a disadvantage because you are denied critical information. You're denied information by your department heads, kind of obvious. You're denied information from the media who used to go to cities. They would analyze cities, they'd come back and tell us why cities are beating us. You're denied information by appointees to boards and commissions who never come out here and raise their hands and say, they're messing with our money, they're misusing our money. I don't even think I could be wrong, but I don't think you have a representative on the Convention and Tourism Commission, and you're the chief funder of those efforts primarily in downtown St. Louis. So as a county citizen, I feel pretty vulnerable to decisions you're making because you don't have enough information. That's a nice way of saying you're not doing the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golderman.
Next speaker is Chris Davis.
Chris.
Next speaker is Jim Singer.
I'm...
What about Janet Singer? No? How about Steve, and I can't read the last name, starts with an S?
I think he left.
He left, okay. Moving right along, Tom Sullivan.
I won't be holding my comments.
Why, I'm not surprised.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I have filed another complaint against the County Council with the Attorney General for violating sunshine law at the August 20th meeting. The number of complaints keeps growing. The last week's meeting, the county executive was again preaching about the culture of transparency he wants to create. He then hurried to a meeting at St. Louis City Hall for a crime summit. The meeting was closed to the public. I recently requested copies of the resumes and correspondence from anyone that applied to be on the MSD Board of Trustees. This was after the county executive made an appointment last week to the MSD Board. I was told that these were personnel records and would be kept covered up, just like Steve. There are a couple of problems with Mr. Page's recent appointment to the MSD Board. In his letter, which was sent to the wrong person at MSD, he appoints Amy Ford to the remaining term of the trustee who resigned, and also appoints her to a full term following completion of the partial term. I don't know how that can be done. Also, the MSD Charter requires no more than two of the three board members from both the city or the county to be the same, it requires, can only be two of the same political party. There are two Democrats from the county, but the county executive failed to indicate the political affiliation of his newest appointee. The last week's meeting, Mr. Page was bemoaning the many boards and commission meetings, commissions needing to be filled, but he said he was moving judiciously to seek qualified and ethical people. Moving judiciously or hardly moving at all. Sam Page became county executive on April 29th. It's nearly five months later, and he hasn't come up with people needed for various boards, despite the small army of people working in his office. County executive is now proposing a cone of silence for procurement and contracting procedures. I don't know what it would solve. This seems to be more campaigning for next year's election. The main problem in recent times has been council members, including Sam Page, not providing checks on Steve Stinger. Consider the Northwest leases. They had red flags all over them. A citizen continually pointed out the problems. Everything about these leases stink, the citizen told the council. But this is what Councilmember Sam Page said about one of the biggest taxpayer rip-offs in St. Louis County history. This is a great location for the election board, he said. It's a great value. It's great access. It's better space. No legislation can require the council members use good judgment, do their jobs, or serve with integrity. Thank you, Mr. Tracus.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoth, state and county public advocate. First of all, I want to give a shout-out to our regional professional baseball team. The River City Rascals are the winners, the Frontier League champions. The River City Rascals won last night in game five over the Florence-Kentucky Freedom, 9 to 7. So I think that we need to congratulate them. The hate, the dissension, and the bad treatment of citizens needs to cease by Police Chief John Belmar and certain members of his security task force, both uniformed police officers and security police officers that you see in brown uniforms. The treatment by Chief John Belmar through a sergeant and other security officers results in my comments at these council meetings, and I think it's a tragedy. I feel it's discriminatory, and I feel it's wrong. The practice of bad treatment transfers over to the county police headquarters. There was an occurrence last Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 12:05 PM, in which I encountered a security officer by the name of Zuelig, Z-U-E-L-I-G, badge number 4417, who's a security officer. And after going through intense security to make sure that I wasn't a threat and didn't have any weapons, he wanted to know where I was going and attacked supportive facility that every time we go to the store to buy something, we spend a half cent sales tax that pays for police officers in the headquarters. Sergeant McCarthy, who's over here to my left, badge number 264, who is a full-fledged police officer sergeant in charge of police security, is very unprofessional and has a personal beef through Chief Belmar. He needs drastic training and drastic public relations, service community training. He needs to know how to treat the public and not treat them so badly and harshly. Now Sergeant Moran, who's a woman police sergeant, badge number 248, who's here, she's usually here at the meetings, but I don't see her here tonight. She's also in the security unit, was very professional, cool, calm, collected, knew exactly what was going on. Now, I was at the security checkpoint, went through the in-depth, making sure that I had zero weapons, no guns, knives, grenades, et cetera, and then two to make sure that I'm not a security threat, which I'm not. I support police, and I support their function, but I don't appreciate them treating me badly or discriminatory. I was denied to go do internal affairs to file a complaint about security officer Fifthman, who's up here in the corner, in the brown security uniform, badge number 73, as he violated and broke the county smoking ordinance. So I was denied at 12:13 to file a complaint. I asked... I asked to go to the chief's office at two four, at twelve fourteen P.M. and was denied to ask for an agenda of the Board of Police Commissioners and a citizen speaker card. And it's unfortunate, and I'll wrap up real here, real quick here.
Thank you, Mr. Deenoff.
It's unfortunate that Chief Belmar wants to keep a secret domain about, and keep people out of what a Board of Police Commissioners is, and the chief is trying and tempting to keep at bay the public from going to police commission meetings, enabling bad behavior on his part. I'm calling for his removal, and we need a chief who cares about the community, who doesn't want his police officers to treat people with disrespect and unprofessionalism. I ask that somebody look into this. I ask that Chief Belmar have his internal affairs people contact me so I can make the appropriate complaints, so they can be appropriate, investigated, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Patrick Fox.
My name is Patrick Fox. I come before the council this evening to follow up on my written petition to the council requesting a hearing regarding my erroneous property tax assessment. While I am but one of the twenty-five thousand property owners who appealed their assessment, I understand and respect processes and procedures. Unfortunately, those same values are lacking in the county assessor. There has been no information sharing on exactly how comparable sales are selected or computed. At the meeting at the University City Library attended, in between posturing for change at the state legislative level, Jake Zimmerman shared that the process is both complicated and computerized, yet we are all human and mistakes can happen. Which is it, a computer or a person? Either way, I am confident that the value assigned to my home using a comparable sales approach is very wrong. I have a two-bedroom, one-bath home, and the assessors computer-selected homes with more bedrooms and more bathrooms as comparables. I've asked repeatedly for explanation on how this can be without a response. While I recognize I am not alone, and this is a systemic problem that the current assessor is ill-qualified to tackle, I am, however, comforted by the fact that there are a series of avenues a taxpayer may take to appeal their property assessment. First is the Board of Equalization, which I did. However, the board member hearing my case did not consider any of the more reasonable, valid comparable sales in any way. After the Board of Equalization, taxpayers are informed that they may appeal to the State Tax Commission, which I did. What they are not informed of is that there is an alternative method to appeal under St. Louis County Revised Ordinance five-zero-three-point-zero-nine-zero. In case some of you are unaware, this is a process by which a taxpayer can petition the council for a hearing on an erroneous assessment. It reads as follows. "In the event a petition for erroneous assessment is denied by the Board of Equalization, the taxpayer, his agent or attorney, may within thirty days thereafter file with the county clerk a written request for the county council to consider the petition, and the clerk shall promptly set the matter for hearing." I submitted my request to the county clerk on August second and was part of the add-on agenda to the council six weeks ago. Since that time, no council representatives have followed up with me regarding when this matter would be set for hearing. Tomorrow, I have my appeal before the State Tax Commission, and my hope was that this matter could be resolved before that time. After nearly six weeks with no follow-up, it is disappointing to me that the council has not seen fit to follow up with me in any way. I take issue with two particular words in the ordinance not being followed. The first word being the word "shall." This is something many council members should be familiar with, as it is a word they used when the prior county executive chose to interpret that the word "shall" means that attendance at council meetings are optional. The county felt very differently, but for some reason, in my case, the word "shall" means a hearing is optional.
Please go ahead.
My second concern is the word "promptly." It has been six weeks with no hearing. While I have precedence to compare it to, as I did with the prior word, a reasonable person could surmise that the word would mean sooner than six weeks. I would appreciate it if someone could follow with me as to the status of the hearing as requested when I followed the proper procedure under the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Final speaker this evening is Kathy Frederick.
My name is Kathy Frederick, and I wanted to talk about the road at the north end of Worsen, okay, that runs from Page to Midland. Recently, I had talked to, what happened was, they took a perfectly good paved road and Missouri Petroleum, I understand, threw down tar and then rocks over it. Instead of having a paved road now that runs from Page on North Worsen to Midland, we have tar and rocks over it, okay? I would like to see, and so would the other people who talked to Mr. Cronin, as I did, about this situation, a paved road just like Entity has that runs from, I believe it runs from Lackland to Midland. And Ruckert is a paved road also that runs from Worsen Road, North Worsen Road, out to Page, where the Page extension is, okay? Because I don't think they should have gone over that road. I have no idea why they went over it and just threw down tar and then rocks. My neighbor up the street from me on Walk On does roads, and he mentioned to me that it was kind of a slapshot job, basically. And like I said, not just myself, but other people have been complaining about the road. And if it could be fixed, or if we could have a paved road, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public forum. Proceed with introduction, please.
Bill number two-sixty, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance establishing a new minimum capitalization threshold as part of St. Louis County's asset capitalization and depreciation policy. Bill number two-sixty-one, introduced by Councilmembers Daze, Walton Gray, and Dunaway, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for coordination and cooperation on a state I-two-seventy north corridor improvement project. Bill number two-sixty-two, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police to donate a two thousand and four Continental trailer to the Creve Court Fire Protection District. Bill number two-sixty-three, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance amending Chapter one oh seven, Title one, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance, as nineteen seventy-four is amended, purchasing by adding and enacting two new sections pertaining to St. Louis County's cone of silence policy. Bill number two-sixty-four, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance appropriating up to seven, seventy-six million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-six dollars of the funds received from the state of Missouri from the Prop A half-cent sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five for the Public Mass Transit Trust Fund for public transportation services from the amount received by St. Louis County from July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, appropriating from the Transportation Trust Fund fifty percent of the amount received by St. Louis County from the sales tax levied by ordinance number six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two from July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, net of the TIF transfers out, appropriating in the Public Mass Transit Fund one hundred percent of the amount received from July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, from the quarter-cent Prop M sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-three, net of TIF transfers out, and providing for the amounts and method of disbursements to by state development agency. Bill number two-sixty-five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept by special warranty deed from the St. Louis County Port Authority titled to certain properties located within the city of Clayton, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the St. Louis County Port Authority pertaining to sale of three of the properties, and authorizing execution of deeds and other documents related to such sales. Bill number two-sixty-six, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of one million, forty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund in support of the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership. Bill number two-sixty-seven, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Harder, an ordinance amending Chapter six eleven, Title six, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance, as nineteen seventy-four is amended, Animal Control Code by repealing and reenacting Section six eleven point two fifty pertaining to the establishment of an Animal Care and Control Advisory Board and membership duties and obligations related thereto. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill number twenty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number twenty is held.
Bill number two-fifty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number two-fifty-seven. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two-fifty-seven is perfected.
Bill number two-fifty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number two-fifty-eight. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two-fifty-eight is perfected.
Bill number two-fifty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number two-fifty-nine. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill two-fifty-nine is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number two-fifty, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two-fifty. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two-fifty, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two-fifty-one. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two-fifty-one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty-one is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Pass it. Yeah.
Is there a second?
No. Second. This is move to final passage of two-fifty-two. I'm seconding it. I'm seconding it.
Very well, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two-fifty-two, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well, Bill number two-fifty-two is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two-fifty-three. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number two-fifty-three, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty-three is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-four, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
I move to hold Bill number two-fifty-four, and Bill number two-fifty-four is held.
Bill number two-fifty-five, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two-fifty-five. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number two-fifty-five, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty-five is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-six, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two-fifty-six.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two-fifty-six, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty-six is finally passed.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have three additional resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please read the resolution and include Section two. You can delete Section one.
Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Harder. Resolution, whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen marks the two-hundred and thirty-second anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September sixteen through the twenty-second Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section number two, the County Council further encourages the citizens of St. Louis County to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
I want to move Resolution number one. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Before I cast my vote, I want to take a moment here. I want to commend Councilman Harder for the resolution. What we do here every week is in no small way because of the very document this resolution commemorates. All too often, we take for granted the liberties and freedoms we have in this country that are embodied and guaranteed in that document. So I don't want to let this moment pass without giving it the requisite recognition and commemoration it deserves. I'll say it often, I said it yesterday, and I'll say it again here tonight, two-hundred and thirty-two years ago. Benjamin Franklin's leaving Constitution Hall, Independence Hall in Philadelphia. Elizabeth Powell boldly asked him, "Doctor, what kind of government did you give us, a monarchy or a republic?" And Franklin's famous retort was, "A republic, madam, if you can keep it." That wasn't a threat, that was a charge by Franklin for all of us. Every day, every week, the citizens that come here to speak are doing just that, keeping the republic. The day we stop holding public officials accountable is the day our liberties begin to erode. So again, I want to thank Councilman Harder for his resolution recognizing and commemorating the Constitution. I would ask each of you to keep that in mind this week as we celebrate Constitution Week, and with that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Thank you, Chairman Trakus. I, too, am very proud of our Constitution. I think a lot of people don't understand it. Unfortunately, we don't teach civics the way we used to in our high schools and grade schools and colleges. I encourage anyone that needs a brush-up on the Constitution. I think it's a good thing, and I don't think we can't not do it enough. And it's a document that withstands the test of time, even with amendments, and is such that it should be honored as such. So, thank you, and I vote aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Resolution number one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well, Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for adoption of Resolution number two.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Resolution two, there are six ayes, excuse me, and one absent.
Resolution two, number two is adopted.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of Resolution number three.
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Resolution number 3, there are six ayes and one absent.
Resolution number 3 is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number 1, 3rd District.
Please hold. So ordered.
Item number 2.
I'm going to drop this from the order of business. I want to credit the administration and the county executive's office for taking my concerns seriously and conducting a thorough and complete investigation here, and I'm satisfied that the findings and the steps they've taken have addressed any concerns I had, and frankly, there was no evidence of any fraud or anything, just some technical glitches that have been addressed, and I'm satisfied with that. So we'll drop this from the order of business.
Item number 3, 4th District.
Please hold. So ordered.
Item number 4, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the new liquor license be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Presiding Officer, under new business, we have no prepared orders this evening.
Very well. Anything further from any council members? Councilman Harder.
Just want to announce that I formed a task force out in West County to deal with our spike in car break-ins and car thefts, and we are meeting tomorrow at the Baldwin City Hall. The police chiefs and Prosecutor Bell is going to be there to talk about what his initiatives are or will be, and what the task force wants to do in that area. We hope to come up with a model that maybe could be used in other parts of the council or other parts of the county if what we have planned works, and we've got to get a handle on this problem, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you for that initiative. Go ahead, Councilmember Gray.
In a similar vein, I have a public safety awareness fair on Friday, September 27th, in North St. Louis County at Ward Chapel Church. We will be in the parking lot area because we wanted to be enough space for all the residents of North County to be able to come and meet and talk with the North County Precinct Chief, and also Prosecutor Wesley Bell will be there as well. So you can ask questions directly to those persons.
I'll add something. I was excited to hear that tomorrow, the Office of Diversity will be hosting a vendor opportunity fair at Umsel from 7:30 to 4, which is an opportunity for anyone who's doing, interested in doing business with St. Louis County to come out and learn more information.
Anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?[1789.78]